Beth, can you hear me?
Sure can, Rob. Thank you.
All right, Mariana, can you hear me?
I can, yes, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, you're the only folks, I think. All right, so that's, uh, let me turn the video on, where's that? Actually, you see me, so that's, we got two board members here. And no one else online, so I'm
Okay.
ready to go.
Let's go, let's call this meeting to order at seven oh seven PM on Tuesday, March eleventh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
We for the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, visible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think there are enough of us here this evening where we can approve the minutes from our prior meetings dated February eleventh and February twenty fifth. If everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes, and if there are no changes, if I could have a motion to approve the minutes. Anyway.
I'll give it a try. Um, I would like to
Make a motion.
make a motion, okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of of February eleventh, twenty, uh, twenty twenty five, there we go.
And February.
Yeah, February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hey, so I don't think we have any visitors that have logged in.
We do not, just, uh, two board members is all we have.
Okay, so we can move on to correspondence and community input. Has anyone received any correspondence and community input? I have it on. I
No.
I have received some input from a community member in regards to making our meetings more, uh, visible. So my recommendation, Rob, is perhaps to post on Parents Square, the school committee meetings, and to have the link in the newsletter itself that goes out to the parents. I know it's posted, but the link itself is not easily accessible.
Um, I do know, I noticed that this meeting was not on the community calendar.
Oh.
So that might be making a difference too.
Again?
It wasn't posted on the calendar, I'm sure it was posted in town hall, but.
Oh, it should be, so we need to make sure that we post these mediums, Rob, in, in every way.
I don't trust to verify. Hundred percent correct, it is not on the community calendar. So, uh, I'd ask Chris, but she's down there. So I don't know if it's, uh, where the breakdown is, but we'll find out.
Okay.
In regard to that.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and if we can post it on Parents Square, I know Swamp Scott does it, and, um, it, I think it's great, because a lot of parents forget.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to the examination and authorization for the payment of bills.
All right, the bills and folks online don't have them, uh, they're all standard items. Seaside pizza, Home Depot, National Grid, Instant Alarm, A-one exterminators, Amazon Capital for Supplies, Town of Swampscut would be tuition. Stop and Shop Supermarket, which I believe is part of the cafeteria, Horizon North Shore Education Consortium. Um, there's a legal bill for a thousand dollars, which is an ongoing line that incurs expenses, uh, more special ed tuition, uh, some parents that are reimbursed for transportation for children, and another sped program, so nothing unusual. The total is forty six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty cents.
Could I have a motion to approve the bill, Rob? I would like to make, make a motion to approve the bill. Payment of bills in the amount of, oh my gosh, forty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three eighty.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Moving on to both superintendent and principals' report for this evening.
I don't have the principal's report, um, Sanders is ill this evening, he had planned to attend, so I do not have his report in hand to deliver. My report, um, reminder that the Finance Committee on Thursday night at six thirty on Zoom, and that is posted on the community calendar, uh, the link is there to the Zoom meeting. And, um, they'll be discussing the version of the budget that I'll be presenting tonight and you'll be considering. So that is our meeting, it is the only agenda item on the FinCon meeting, is the discussion of the school budget. So I think they do different departments at different times.
Yes.
So if you can join, um, that would be great, if you can't, um, I'm fine to present. Um, they have copies of it in advance, and, um, I just wanted to make sure that folks know that will be our, um, one, as far as I know, audience with the Finance Committee with regard to our budget. But it totally relates to the budget that you're gonna consider tonight.
I would be there, uh, via Zoom.
That is that, and the other parts, the ban is in its final stages of being stenciled, and I promised it, I've said this several times, the end of next week, so that will be nice. Uh, the greenhouse project is starting to unfold, uh, we have folks, uh, purchased, uh, bricks for the walkway. Uh, I had one individual today buy three bricks, um, which is nice. Um, the foundation is gonna be put in by McGrath Enterprises in Lynn, and, uh, scheduled for that is over April break. So without kids around, the trucks and cement mixers and all that kind of stuff will be able to do their work. Uh, we have engaged a actually quite reasonable priced installer of the greenhouse who'll do the frame, the polycarbonate cover, and frame in the doors and the vents and the heater, but not install them. And that would be done by a local contractor that's agreed to serve as a general contractor and oversee the project and help me out with it, um, for a, a reasonable price as well. The group that will be doing the actual erection of the kit is Deerfield Greenhouse Builders from Deerfield, Mass. And they're one of two, uh, folks that work with a greenhouse company to put these structures up. So that's exciting, and the numbers are working within our allotted, um, amount that we have, rate at this point, so. That's basically my report right now.
Uh, may I just ask about the bricks, when the link that you sent was broken, it comes up as an error?
Well, because when it was originally sent, I think,
Oh, well, can I?
it didn't work properly.
Okay.
Uh, there's something to do with the way the constructor of that link, that first blast I gave out, which included board members.
Okay.
Uh, that's been fixed now, so if you go to the Johnson School website.
Right.
Uh, in the upper left-hand corner now is the picture of the structure as well as an active link that takes you to the place where you would, uh,
Okay.
do what you wanted for engraving or whatever, and we have twelve, fifteen people that have already responded to that, so that, that first link was broken.
Oh, yes.
I just didn't re-blast the
Okay, cuz.
group that I sent it to, um.
How do you pay for it?
Uh, you have to pay by check.
Okay, all right, perfect, that was my biggest question.
Yeah, I mean, originally, Mariana, yours is, uh, thank you very much, and thank you, Beth, uh, are already in the record, there's a, a spreadsheet that shows me what you wanted on it and is recorded, and, um, the links now say you were dealing with an original link, checks to be made out to Johnson Elementary School. The original idea was you could have had a PayPal account. You could have, uh, taken credit cards. Uh, the town has, from what I was told, no, no method to use that particular setup for it, and PayPal has some, uh, problems with folks that get into it and are able to crash the site. So I didn't go with PayPal, I decided to go just with checks, and you make them out to Johnson Elementary, uh, Town of Nahat Johnson Elementary School Greenhouse Project.
Okay.
Do a separate category.
Mm-hmm.
And thank you very much for your
Rob, what did I, did I order one, but I haven't paid for it, is that it?
Uh, you did, Beth, and, uh, all you have to do is to send the check. Yep. But you were part of that initial first
Yeah.
over excitement of your superintendent blast of, uh, likely donors.
Yes. Rob actively marketing this, you know, like black
Well, I put it on Facebook, uh, everywhere I could, it's on our website. Um, I've sent it to all the teachers, I put it in Parents Square twice. Uh, once with, uh, active link as well as a reminder tonight that went out, maybe five o'clock-ish, that said it's now on the website and it's gonna remain there, because the Parents Square is sort of like drift off down the list of active, you know, emails from the nurse and whatever, where it'll be right on the website from now forward.
Are you okay if I post it in, like, a public page of Nahat?
I would love you to share it with anyone that you can.
Okay.
And I did send it to the town and asked them if they had a place on their website, they could post it, the answer was yes. I just haven't seen it posted there yet. I don't, we have an email blast, I was hoping maybe they had a blast, a a blast all taxpayers or whatever, uh, apparently they don't, but they said they'd try to get it on the town website. And I think the reference was to the community calendar, I, I just didn't, haven't seen it there yet. But that was only a couple of days ago that I tried to reach out to that.
Can you request to have it broadcasted through a Board of Selectmen meeting?
I'm sure I can do that, uh, but we actually had a voice that I've listened to for so many years up in Maine on my boat before I was ever down here, Carl Stevens from WBZ called yesterday and said, hey, I wanna talk to you about your, your brick fundraiser, I live in Revere Beach, can I come over? And he came over, um, and on WBZ last night, they had a story about the greenhouse and the brick fundraiser, and, uh, it was very well done. So, um, yeah, as many places we can blast that, because, uh, the eighty thousand takes care of
Oh, cool, Rob.
which is gonna cost about twenty-five, uh, it takes care of the putting the kit up, which is around sixteen, plus housing, because they come from Deerfield, Mass. Uh, estimated for two weeks, they have to stay over during the week for that. And that pretty much takes care of the eighty thousand, so we'll still have run an electrical line, run a water line, hook up the gas line, um. There'll be some associated costs that the brick fundraiser will need to cover, as well as building the raise beds and, um, getting the first supplies for the kids to be able to plant in the fall. But it's coming together, I think, nicely, so.
That's amazing.
Lot of help with regard. So the only other thing I would add, and we're about to go to it anyway, is after Kevin's report was personnel updates, uh, that Melissa Austin has, uh, started already as Maddie Fodero's, uh, sub, and she had her baby, uh, a couple of days ago, um, Teddy, I don't remember what the middle name was, but a beautiful name, and I saw a picture of just sort of what life's all about, you know what I mean? And, uh, we're so thrilled that, uh, she's able to transition into that important, uh, stage of life, so. And Melissa's doing a, a fantast- a fantastic job, actually Maddie left two or three days early, which was probably wise, because Melissa had overlapped and was doing such a a solid job Maddie thought that she was just getting in the way, and that it would be better for her to
Mm-hmm.
start a little earlier and turn the keys over to Melissa. So that, that was a tremendous hire, uh, with regard to that, so.
Fabulous.
That's that part.
Okay, moving on to uh, I don't think we have any old business other than the budget. Um, new business.
Under new business, I don't have any other old business, under new business, and I think I sent it to all the board members, and again, it's all the folks that we have online. Let me pull it up, is a recommendation about the preschool fees that are charged. Uh, in, in a nutshell, the fees have not been changed for five years, I am told. Um, I'm recommending that regardless of whether some of the preschool balance is being projected to be used in this budget, that there ought to be a reasonable adjustment to keep up with costs, because remember preschool is supposed to be self-funding, and the revenue from the fees pays the teachers, pays the ed tax, pays the pairs, pays for supplies, so all of that increases in price. So what I recommend is a yearly increase until the board would decide different, of two point five percent. So it's the same as the, uh, tax cap limit, uh, not to go up more than two and a half percent. Um, that would raise, if the same number of people were in the preschool this year, which is forty-two kids, would raise an additional five thousand, two hundred and eighty kids through the entire year. So it's not a, a huge sum of money, but it does start to help towards the costs that escalate uh, with respect to the fees. And, uh, I, I don't think it drives anybody away, uh, for instance, um, someone who's on this list, I've got an anonymous list here without the names, they're just contested number one through forty-two, if you're a, uh, five thousand dollar fee payer for the entire year, the two point five percent would ask you for a hundred and twenty-five more for the entire year of service, and again, it hasn't been adjusted for five years. So, um, my recommendation, and again, you don't have to do it tonight, it's not essential, you could, uh, table it. But, um, I, I think it will be important to adjust those fees, and I don't think it makes sense to go three, five, ten percent adjustment, I think it should be a reasonable number, and I see the Three, five, ten percent adjustment, I think it should be a reasonable number, and I see the two point five. Sort of adjustment in the. Expectation for taxes to apply the same kind of way to preschool fees. So. That is an agenda item and. You folks can either take action on it or you could table it.
I guess my only question regarding this, Rob, is do you know, yeah, have we done any like benchmark? I'm curious as to like where this school falls in relation to other similar. Programs out there.
I think you're right in the same category, I saw.
Rob, I thought this was a great proposal, um.
What was that? Yeah, I didn't hear.
Marianna, can, can you hear me? Could you guys, could you guys?
It's, it's Beth who's trying to.
It's bad. Yeah. I was just gonna say, I think you should vote tonight, I thought this was a no-brainer. Makes a lot of sense, it's a nominal increase.
Yeah, I don't know, it's very nominal, I, I'm just curious.
And I actually saw to, to try to compare the numbers, um, I think it was Marblehead was going to, um. Full year preschool. Uh, not full year, full day preschool instead of partial day which ours is. And their numbers, what they're presently doing is partial day, we're right in the same ballpark as what our numbers are. So I don't think we're undercharging or overcharging, and I think. To go five years without a adjustment, um, regardless of. The budget situation we're in, um. Should be something that should be taken care of over time. So my recommendation would be for, uh, two and a half percent adjustment in the preschool fees per year. That's not only for the. Preschool part, but also lunch bunch. So the lunch bunch would be adjusted by two point five.
Can I, if everyone. Does not want to, if no one else has any further thoughts on the matter, let me rephrase what I was going to say. Then can I have a motion to, uh, approve the two and a half percent?
Well, should do, approve the two and a half percent increase annually for the preschool and lunch bunch.
Do I have a second?
Second. A second.
Okay, and a third, all in favor?
Hi.
Moving on to the district report card.
Right, the district report card. Uh, Kevin sent that out, I believe by email, maybe this morning. Uh, the only issue with it was that the copy that you received. Had the condensed version from the two thousand twenty-four, the most recent report card. And then the one that he referred to was, uh, the, the full length. That was actually the two thousand twenty-three version.
Uh.
So if you tried to cross-reference those, you can't do that. And I don't believe he sent a new two thousand twenty-four. The condensed version though. Does go through all the, um. Things that are measured by a school report card, this has to be posted on the website. Uh, I believe he sends it out to parents through Parent Square, um. It has to be presented to a school committee. Uh, there's no timeline on it. So. I could go down through all the elements of it, but, um. I think this one, uh, would warrant tabling until our next meeting.
I agree.
And then have Kevin present it.
I, I agree, I, I want to spend some time on this, so. Let's table this. Okay, presentation of version four.
Okay, so since. I thought we would have capability in screen, the screen's here, but. For extenuating reasons, we didn't have a chance to start on time, so I have sent these out. No one else is online. Uh, let me give you the. Cliff note version, and then if you guys wanna have anything more specific, I will do that. But this version four. Works within the number that, uh, Tony Barletta and Allison Nieto. Who met with Patty and I, um. To. Try to be sure that the school part of the budget fit into the entire. Town's consideration for all departments, and that was an increase of a hundred and twelve thousand, one oh nine. And then you, you folks had directed me to come back with a version four. That included the math and ELL specialist. So I've done that, and I've done it within the hundred and twelve thousand, one oh nine. So the budget increase would be the same. The way I've done that is to propose that we. Attempt to hire a point four FTE math and ELL specialist. That means they would be here two full days a week. And to. Call a spade a spade, a chance of finding someone young, low on the teacher scale. That's gonna be interested in doing that with any kind of experience is not very high. I think you've got to assume it's gonna be a recently retired teacher. Who wants to keep their hand in it, doesn't wanna wo- work full-time, doesn't want their own classroom, but would be. Thrilled to work with kids that were. Uh, struggling in the areas of math and, and ELL, and you can do that. With this budget and a little draw from a couple of your revolving accounts. So that you'll have this specialist in place next year. And then we were pretty well assured that in future years, this could be considered to be a position. And we're, we're a small school, I don't know if you need someone. Out at, at a one point oh, five days a week, right out of the chute. I think the two days a week. Paying for a whatever they're, they are on the scale, the best applicant we can find, um, will work. And will be a test run of the value of this position and be. Um, the word isn't ammunition, but I'll just use it, ammunition for. Next year's budget build where we say this needs to be expanded to three days a week. Because we can't cover the caseload and, and, and that sort of stuff, and here are the results. The number of kids that have improved in their math scores and their ELLs, E, ELA scores. So I've. Reached what you asked me to do, which was come back with a version that included the specialist. I just didn't come back with a one point oh specialist, I came back with a point four. From the town's perspective, as long as the budget is at that one twelve level. If it had been above a point five, they would have had to factor in a health insurance.
Mm-hmm.
And that would have been a, a lot of extra money, which they just don't have right now, given their budget situation this year. So my recommendation is again to do the point four, and. This is the point where with a FinCom meeting coming up Thursday night, uh, I would be. With your vote and blessing, passing off. Um, my superintendent's budget to become the school committee budget. And the motion would be. To adopt the superintendent's budget as the school committee's budget. For further presentation to Finance Committee and Selectmen. And I wanted to get you a figure. It would be. Four million, eight fifty-four, four eleven. Which is an increase of one twelve, one oh nine, doesn't have to be part of the recommendation, and. For your knowledge purposes, the percent increase is two point three six. So remember our journey on this, uh, whole situation was. We started with a two hundred and forty-six thousand version one, which was five point one nine percent. But didn't include a math and ELL specialist. And we presented a version two saying, well, if we could. Be able to do this, this was back in January, we would do a budget increase of six point six seven, three hundred and sixteen thousand. We then came back with version three, which was the last meeting, one twelve, one oh nine, no math and ELL specialist. And now we're considering version four, which includes the point four. One twelve increase within the town's, uh, ability to, uh, be able to fund this without an override. And that increase that I read out, which once again is. Four million, eight fifty-four, four eleven. And that would be the only really key part of your motion is that you. Adopt the superintendent's recommendation of a budget of X, that number, to become the school committee's budget. So that was long-winded, sorry about that, but that's. Everything in a nutshell, otherwise than that, the PowerPoint is the same presentation. Just with adjusted numbers in it, that you, that, that I sent you. And the point four FTE. And we may advertise and, um. Nobody comes forward, but I think. There are people out there that, um, are either thinking about retiring or have already retired, who are great teachers. Who would be, uh, excited and, um. Very competent at using their skills for a two-day-a-week job. And then we.
I have to say. Oops, sorry, I was just gonna say thank you for taking the time to. Create a fourth option.
I think it's important, I mean, I think just letting it.
Same, it's great work.
Yeah, and I do appreciate all the time that Tony Barletta and. Allison Nieto took out of their very busy schedules to meet with us, they were very thorough and. Very accommodating. So with that said, could I have a motion, I hope someone was taking notes in regards to the verbiage. Yes. I would, I'm, I'm. Feel a little sketchy, uh, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the superintendent's version four budget. As the school committee budget in the amount of four million, eight hundred and fifty-four eleven. Do I have a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Um, hi.
Okay.
Hi, but thank you again.
I know, thank you. Thank you, thank you, so moving on to school choice.
Well, actually, those are future agenda items, so, uh, there's sort of some, um. Posted items every year that have to be voted at certain times of the year. So coming up on a future agenda will be a vote on whether you wanna participate in the state's school choice program. And that's one of those votes that if you don't vote. You've by default said you're a school choice town. Which you're not, so you have to vote to, no, thank you, we are not gonna be part of school choice. Um, so that's, that's one item, whether I bring it up at the next meeting or the one after that, those are future agenda items. Uh, and then you have to, because you're a K to six school. And you're a school district, you have to vote to request not to maintain a K to twelve school district.
Mm-hmm.
Because technically you're supposed to educate your kids right here in Nahat from kindergarten to grade twelve. And you don't do that because you tuition them out, that requires a vote. That you don't maintain a K to twelve district and you actually send Desi your age span. So a couple of years ago, you had to say K five. Instead of K six.
Mm-hmm.
So it'll be the same motion you had last time to maintain a K to six school district for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And we don't wanna participate in choice. And then, um. We would have evaluation of the superintendent at some point, whenever you folks choose to do that. And we still have our mystery Essex Tech School Board member to get appointed at some point.
We do.
And those would be future agenda items to take care of.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing further. I think we can adjourn this meeting. So would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting today at seven forty P M?
I'll make a motion to adjourn today's meeting at seven forty P M.
Do I have a second?
It, my second.
All in favor?
And again, our, uh, our apologies for, uh. The late start and the lack of things being completely hooked up, but something came up at, uh, six thirty that. Was time sensitive, had to be dealt with, and here we are, so. Thank you for joining, we had a quorum, that's a win.
Mm-hmm.
We got business done, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Love, Beth.
Good night, all.
Uh.
Good night, thank you, and Rob, thank you again for all the extra time you put in.
No problem.
Good night, everybody.
Night. Good night.